I would like to call the meeting to order. I am Superintendent Monica Merritt. Welcome to the July tenth, 2018 Board Meeting. This first portion of the Board Meeting is the Board's Organizational Meeting. And this gives the Board the opportunity at the start of this next school year to establish positions for the Board and to vote on one of those positions. I'd like to begin by giving the Board members an opportunity to introduce themselves, followed by the core teams. I'll begin with you.
Good evening, I'm Kate Borninski. Thanks for coming.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kim Crouch. Nice to see you.
Good evening, Patty McCoyn. Thanks for coming out.
Good evening, Doug Brooks. Thanks for coming out.
Good evening, Patrick Keough. Thanks for coming tonight.
Good evening, Anupam Chugsedu. And happy new school year.
Patricia Mullen, welcome.
Thank you. And I'd like for the members of the core team to introduce themselves to you, beginning with my assistant, Elizabeth Adams, as well as Charlie Jones, the man behind the scenes, who's taking care of the videotaping of these meetings so that those that cannot be with us in person will have the opportunity to enjoy the Board meetings as well. Debbie, on your first Board meeting, welcome.
Thank you very much, Debbie Pios. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I'm Liz Vertanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources.
Good evening, Kurt Siskowitz, Executive Director of Student Services. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Hello, I'm Mike Bender, the Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing.
Good evening, Gary Collins, General Counsel.
At this time, I would like to invite a motion for the adoption of the agenda for the organizational meeting. There are motions.
So moved.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Who supported that?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. The agenda will be adopted as presented. I would now like to invite a motion for the nomination of the President of the Board of Education for the 2018-19 school year. Are there any nominations for the Office of the President?
Yes, I'd like to make a nomination here. I would like to nominate Kate Borninski.
And we don't need seconds for nominations. Are there any other nominations for the Office of the President? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Congratulations, President Borninski. You didn't have an opportunity to refuse. Just keep going. Just keep moving, keep moving.
Thank you. I really appreciate your trust in me and your continuing trust in me by electing me to President again. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we will carry on with the nominations now. Do we have a nomination for Vice President?
I would like to make a nomination for Patty McCoyn for Vice President.
Are there... Oh, we don't need to second, right? Do we have any other nominations? Any other candidates for nominations? No. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Congrat... Any nays? Okay. Congratulations, Vice President McCoyn. Yeah, you're gonna switch. Next, we have the Office of Secretary. Do we have any nominations for Secretary?
I would like to nominate Board Member Anupam Chugsedu for Secretary.
Do we have any other nominations for Secretary? All in... Hearing none, then all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, congratulations, Board Members Seedo. Next, we have the Office of Treasurer. Do we have any nominations for Treasurer? I'm going to nominate Patrick Keough. I'm not sure if President can do that. Nope, you can't. Okay. I'd like to nominate someone.
I'd like to nominate Patrick Keough for Treasurer.
Okay. Twist your arm. Are there any other nominations for Treasurer? Anyone? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Congratulations. Yeah, I did. If you can't vote for yourself, that's kind of sad.
Always vote for yourself.
Yeah. Always vote for yourself. Okay, that concludes our nominations. But we have a few other parts of our organizational meeting, and that is approving our bylaws and also appointing some various things like District Council. So I'm gonna ask the Board members to read these out loud as we get to them. It's a bit of a process here, and it's a little bit boring for those in the audience. I'm sorry. But we're gonna do this so that we are sure that we have complied with everything we need to comply with. First up is Bylaws Numbers 0164 and Point One and 0164 Point Two. Time, place, and notification of meetings. Let's start on my right with Member Mullen. Could you please read Number Three? Read down to the zip code.
Okay. Number Three, Bylaws Number 0164 Point One and 0164 Point Two. Time, place, and notification of meetings. It was moved by... Do I read this part?
You don't read that part.
Okay. Sorry about that. Regular meetings of the Board of Education of the Plymouth Canton Community Schools, Wayne and Washtenaw Counties, Michigan, shall be held on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month, except there will be no meeting on the fourth Tuesday in July and no meeting on the fourth Tuesday in December, beginning at 7:00 PM at the following location, except as agreed herein, unless otherwise directed by a majority vote of the members. EJ McLendon Educational Center, 454 South Harvey Street, Plymouth, Michigan, 48170. Let me be on the zip code?
Uh, no, that's good. Member Seedo, would you continue? And then we'll do the motions.
So continue under the zip code, right?
Yeah, with this... So that part that Member Mullen just read was Bylaw Number 0164 Point One. Regular meetings, time, place, and notification. So could you please do the second bylaw there?
Bylaw Number 0164 Point Two. Special meetings, time, place, and notification. Special meetings of the Board of Education of the Plymouth Canton Community Schools, Wayne and Washtenaw Counties, Michigan, may be called by the President of the Board or any two members thereof by serving on other members a written notice of the day, time, and place of such special meetings or by a majority vote of the Board. Public notice of each meeting of the Board of Education shall be given by posting a copy on the notice on the message board by the front entrance to the EJ McLendon Educational Center, 454 South Harvey, Plymouth, Michigan, at least eighteen hours prior to the time of the meeting. Elizabeth Adams or other central office staff in her absence shall be appointed the designee for posting notice of meetings.
Could we have a motion on this?
I move that we adopt... Let me turn the page back. Bylaws Number 0164... 0164 Point One and 0164 Point Two.
Support. It was moved by Member Mullen and seconded by Member Seedo to adopt these bylaws, 0164 Point One and 0164 Point Two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes seven zero. Okay, next, we need a motion about directing the Secretary to advertise the bylaws. Could you please mention that in the motion, please?
I move that we direct the Secretary to post the bylaws as directed in the Plymouth Canton Observer. Is that sufficient?
Yes. Is there support?
Support.
It was moved by Member Mullen and seconded by Member Brooks, because I heard him first. Sorry. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes seven zero. For this next one, I think I did things a little bit out of order before. So we're gonna read the motion. We're... Actually, first, we're gonna have the motion, and then we'll read.
Actually, if you want me to, it actually just goes like this for Number Four. You can just say, "I move that we authorize..." Well, you start off by saying authorize signatures for school district business, and you just say, "I move that we authorize the following..."
Signatures?
For school district business. And then you go down like that, and then at the end of it, when you finish, you ask for the second.
Yep. Okay. So for Number Four... While we're going in order.
Well, yeah.
If you wanted to. We'll let Patrick do it.
So as part of the authorization for signatures for school district business, I move that we authorize the following signatures for school district business. I'm gonna read off a list of documents and the 2018-2019 authorized signatures. For administrative contracts, that's the President, Secretary, or Superintendent. For teacher contracts, for probationary, it's the President, Secretary, or Superintendent. For continuing tenure, President, Secretary, or Superintendent. For motor vehicle titles, that's the Superintendent, Chief Finance or Chief Finance and Operations Officer... I'm sorry. And Chief Finance and Operations Officer. For land contracts, it's the President, Secretary, or Superintendent. Deeds to real estate is the President, Secretary, or Superintendent. Leases and easements, President, Secretary, Superintendent or Chief Financial and... Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Deposit and investment accounts, President, Treasurer, Superintendent, Chief Finance and Operations Officer, Director of Finance and Accounting, or Business Manager. Vendor contracts, Superintendent, Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Do we have a second?
Support.
Okay, the motion was made by Member Keough and supported by Member Mullen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes seven zero. Okay. Member McCoyn, would you start Number Five? Just do A, I guess.
I move that the Treasurer and/or Chief Finance and Operations Officer be authorized to deposit all monies for all funds of the Plymouth Canton Community Schools in the following banks. Bank of America Merrill Lynch, Citizens Bank Comerica, Community Financial Credit Union, Fifth Third Bank Flagstar, JP Morgan Chase Bank MA, Michigan Liquid Trust Asset Fund, Monroe Bank and Trust, PNC Bank, and PNC Capital Markets LLC, Morgan Stanley. And further, to invest all monies of all funds of the Plymouth Canton Community Schools and investments authorized under Section 1223 of the Michigan School Code of 1976 as amended. And further, that these banks be requested, authorized, and directed to under checks, drafts, and other orders for the payment of money drawn in the name of Plymouth Canton Community Schools against the named funds when bearing the similarly signature of Treasurer Patrick Keough and the similarly signature of President Kate Borninski. And further, that the Huntington National Bank and Bank of New York be designated as the paying agents for bonds of the Plymouth Canton Community Schools as required. And further, a blanket position bond be required for all school district employees in the amount of $100,000, and the cost of the bond be provided by the school district.
Is there support for this?
Support.
Is that Member Seedo?
Yes.
So it was moved by Member McCoyn and seconded by Member Seedo. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes seven zero. Member Brooks.
Just be...
Why don't you do B, C... B and C, because it's kind of short.
I move that we appoint legal counsel for 2018-2019. Collins and Blaha Law Firm, PC, General Counsel.
Support. I'm gonna do... We're gonna vote on this one, then we'll go to the next one. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes seven zero. Okay, now C.
Okay, Number C. Naming other specific legal counsel as appointed by the Board of Education. I move that to appoint other specific legal counsel as appointed by the Board for 2018-2019 to Laporte and Associates, PC, Throon Law Firm, PC, Lacy and Jones, LLP, Clark Hill, PLC.
Is there support? Okay. So it was moved by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Crouch to appoint other specific legal counsel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes seven zero. Member Crouch.
Sure.
Why don't you do D and E?
Okay. I move to appoint Plant Moran LLC, Certified Public Accountant, as the school district auditors for 2018-2019.
Support.
The motion was made by Member Crouch and seconded by Member Mullen, I believe? To appoint Plant Moran as the school district auditors. Any... All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes seven zero.
I also move to appoint Public Financial Management, Inc., formerly Stotter, Barch, and Associates, as the school districts' bond... School districts' bond financial advisor for 2018-2019.
Support.
It was moved by Member Crouch and seconded by Member Mullen again?
Yes.
To appoint Public Financial Management as the school districts' bond financial advisor for 2018-19. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes seven zero. Okay, let's go back to Member Mullen.
And it's Number Six now, right?
Yep.
I move to appoint Public Financial Management, Incorporated, formerly Stotter, Barch, and Associates, as the school districts' bond financial advisor for 2018-2019.
Support.
Did you read A, B, and C? Or no?
You six... Oh, excuse me. I have new glasses today.
Do we already do the public financial management?
We did.
We're on six.
We're on Number Six. She just repeated E.
I repeated E. So let me do six. Okay. I move that the Plymouth Canton Observer or the Detroit Newspaper Agency Newspapers be designated for the following routine advertisements. A, Notice of Budget Hearing and Truth in Taxation Hearing; B, Invitation for Bids; C, Requests for Proposals; and that the Plymouth Canton Observer or the Bond Buyer or the Detroit Legal News, as required, be designated for the publication of: A, Call for Redemption of Bonds; B, Sale of Bonds; C, Sale of Tax Anticipation Notes.
There's the next page.
And... And that invitation for bids for major renovations, additions, and new construction, PA 232 of July 21st, 2004, requires schools to post construction solicitations for a minimum of two weeks on the state of Michigan's Sigma Michigan website.
Support.
It was moved by Member Mullen and seconded by Member Brooks that the Plymouth Canton Observer or the Detroit Newspaper Agency Newspapers be designated for routine... For the following routine advertisements, which we read already. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes seven zero. We're gonna go right into our regular meeting now. So I need a motion to adopt the agenda for our regular meeting and approve the consent agenda. It's... It would be Action Item 180701. Oh, we can do that. I'm sorry. I'm skipping the pledge. Okay. So, let's see. Who would like to do the pledge? Mark Salzer. Because we made you work so hard over the weekend. Could you please lead us in the pledge?
Ladies, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mark. Sorry to put you on the spot. Okay. Now, we're going to do the adoption of the agenda and approval of the consent agenda. Hopefully, if somebody will make a motion.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda and approve of the consent agenda for this meeting today.
Can you read the action item number, please?
Action Item Number 180701.
Support.
The motion was made by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Seedo. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Merritt, would you like to take us through the consent agenda?
Yes, the consent agenda this evening consists of human resources transactions. Since our last time together, we have new hires. We are still hiring champions to start off the school year. We welcome them this evening. We have leasings, retirements, and resignations, as well as the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on June 26th, 2018, and the first reading on crowdfunding. This is Policy 6605.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes seven zero.
Good evening, everyone. First, I would like to take a moment to thank Kathryn Generis, Life Management Teacher at Discovery Middle School. She is retiring after thirty-four years of service. I would also like to thank Terry Kolokowski. She is an elementary teacher at Erickson Elementary School, and she is retiring after forty-one years of service. So congratulations both to Kathryn and Terry. Next, I would like to introduce some fine educators who will begin working with us in the new school year. So if Jennifer Abbott, Nissa Clark, Megan Erickson, Brian Lewis, and Edward Uewett, come on up. Thank you. Right there. That's perfect. Great. So when I introduce you, if you could just step forward. So we all know who you are. So first, we have Jennifer Abbott, our school nurse. And she comes to us with eight years of pediatric nursing, as well as a bachelor's degree from Wayne State University. And she will be working at Discovery Middle School as well as Hoban Elementary School. So welcome and congratulations, Jennifer. Next, I would like to introduce Nissa Clark. Nissa will be a speech pathologist at Dotson Elementary School. She comes to us with five years of experience from Ohio, as well as a bachelor's degree and a master's degree from Ohio. Congratulations. Megan Erickson is not with us here this evening, but Megan Erickson will be teaching at Tonda Elementary School. And she comes to us from Illinois, three years of experience, as well as a bachelor's degree from Hope College. Next, we have Brian Lewis. Hi, Brian. Brian is our new health and physical education teacher at Plymouth High School. He has a bachelor's degree from University of Michigan Ann Arbor. And he comes to us with three years of experience from Gabriel Rashawn. And he also is going to be our new football coach for Plymouth High School. So welcome. He came right from practice. I told him he's in uniform, so it's all good. Yeah, you're good. You're fine. Edward Uewett. Edward is going to be a brand-new math teacher at Salem High School. He comes to us with a bachelor's from Illinois, as well as an MA plus thirty. He also comes to us with nineteen years of experience. So we are very lucky to have you here. Welcome to all of you. Congratulations. And Jennifer, if you could start and lead around so you can meet everybody.
Welcome. Congratulations, welcome aboard. Welcome.
Welcome to the district. Welcome to the district. Welcome to the district. Welcome to the district. I thought you were just like really in Plymouth High School. Jumping right in.
I like the spirit already.
Congratulations, welcome.
Congratulations. Welcome. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. We're now at Letter B, which is Board Committee Reports. First up is the President's Report. I just wanted to reiterate again to my fellow Board members, thank you so much for re-electing me. And I hope to do a better job this year. I feel like I learned a lot over the last year, and I hope to improve things.
Thanks for taking it on again.
Next is Student Performance and Achievement Committee, SPA. Member Seedo.
We've not met since our last meeting at the beginning of June, and we are still working on coordinating a calendar for 2018-19 with Dr. Bender and other members. So a calendar to be posted soon.
Policy Committee, Member Crouch.
Yes, thank you. We have not met since our last meeting as well. We also will be working on our new schedule for the new school year, for the 2018-2019 school year. Hopefully, that'll get posted soon.
Okay. And Finance and Operations, Member Keough.
Again, we have also not met since the last meeting. I'll be working with the new Finance and Operations, or Superintendent of Finance and Operations to establish a schedule and publish that as part of that process.
And next is the EEF for Educational Excellence Foundation Report. I wanted to remind everyone again of the Back to School Bash featuring the EEF Quest for Excellence on August 25th. It's a Saturday in Heritage Park in Canton. And so please come out. It should be fun for everyone, family-friendly, and lots to do. I also wanted to remind teachers that the summer teacher grants are now available for submission, the grant requests. So please get in your teacher grant requests. I believe it's open till around the end of this month. I don't have an exact deadline, I don't have an exact deadline, but it would be on the EEF website, which is eefforkids.org. Okay, uh, next up is Citizens Comments, and I do think we have a few. Do you have? No Citizens? Oh, okay. All right, is there anyone who wishes to speak? I thought we had some forums, but I guess not. Okay. All right, well, we will go straight to administrative reports and recommendations. And first up is the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. As we, I'm gonna say, close out one school year and get ready for the next, I think it's timely to reflect on our village. I often say it takes a village, and we could not be as successful with our students if we did not have the support of our community. And one such community partnership is that with Community Financial. And so, we want to take this opportunity to thank CEO Bill Lawton and his team, Natalie McLaughlin. Looking at the year in total, they shared with me today that they have worked with us to donate over $28,000 to our district initiatives this year. They have over 604 classroom presentations this year. These are conducted for over 11,400 students. In terms of participating, participation in the student-led credit union, we have 1,400 students participating this year. In addition, 610 of our students had the opportunity to volunteer for Community Financial. So, we are just so honored to continue on with this partnership, with this incredible organization. It has been very successful and beneficial for our students, and we want to take that opportunity to thank them today. Looking forward to a continued partnership next year. Also, this evening, I'm asking for your consideration of a tentative agreement that we have reached with our plant engineers. This is always an opportunity to thank our employees. This is hard work, coming to an agreement, but people share the common interest of doing what's in the best interests of our students, our district, as well as looking forward to how we can compensate our staff fairly. That's appropriate. When we talk about the village, it's important for all of our staff members to know that they are valued and a part of this team. So, we thank our plant engineers for reaching. They have ratified this agreement on their behalf and asking for you to consider this agreement this evening.
Okay. Could I please have a motion on action item 180702? Consider approval of tentative agreement with Plymouth Canton Plant Engineers, AFT, MFT, Local 6094. This is a final reading.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of the tentative agreement with the Plymouth Canton Plant Engineers, AFT, MFT, Local 6094. Final reading, action item 180702.
Support.
So, it was moved by trustee Brooks and supported by member Sidhu that the Board of Education ratifies the tentative agreement between the Plymouth Canton Board of Education and the Plymouth Canton Plant Engineers, AFT, MFT, Local 6094. This agreement is effective July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2021. Is there any discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Okay, next up is Teaching and Learning. Dr. Bender has a first reading on a resolution for STEM Academy Technology Purchase. And I would like him to go over it with us very briefly, if he could.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Barninski, and good evening, members of the Board of Education. This evening, we're bringing forward for our first reading a resolution for the Board to consider to upgrade hardware and software for our students currently enrolled in the, and also enrolled in the future in our STEM Academy. The, the software and hardware is listed on the resolution, and these particular items would support learning for students, particularly in the principles of engineering, as well as the introduction to engineering courses. We anticipate that this would be a five-year life for this equipment, and certainly support learning into the future.
Are there questions on this?
I do have a question, two questions, actually. One is, this looks very familiar. Is this the same type of equipment that we use for an upgrade for the computer security lab? Okay.
Yeah, come here.
Sorry. Okay, because it did just look really familiar. That's why I was like, didn't we see this already? And then I realized that this was the STEM lab.
Yep, yep. It's, it's still in that same area, so second, first floor, second floor of Canton, but it's CV9. And the, the CTE has a little bit higher processing needs, so their equipment's a little bit, well, it's nearly the same, so as you see.
They looked almost exactly the same. And the second question is, is that, Dr. Bender, you'd mentioned hardware and software, and from what I can see, this is only hardware. Is that correct?
Yes, but we would have the, the software that would really support the hardware.
Great, we actually get the, the software, it's available for us. We're participants in the STEM program, so we, there's no additional cost for it. It just, the software that we would like to use will run better on this equipment than our current equipment. We've actually...
Understand, but we're, we're not purchasing any software at this point.
No software being purchased.
Right, okay. So, it is only a hardware purchase to support the software that we're already using.
Correct. And there's a care pack, a three-year care pack that goes along with that equipment, but that'll be covering the, any warranty work that we need for it.
Yes, the, the five-year warranty.
Five-year warranty.
Right, got it, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Next up is Finance and Operations. Ms. Piaz, did I say that correctly? Okay. You have several action item numbers for us, um, action items for us. And I will read them and ask for the motion, and then you can introduce them, if that works. Okay. So, first up would be action item 180703. Consider approval of award contracts for bid package number 14. Salem High School Life Skills Classroom Upgrades. This is a final reading. Could I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of award contracts for bid package number 14. Salem High School Life Schools Classroom Upgrades. Final reading, action item 180703.
Support.
The motion was made by member Kehoe and supported by member Brooks. Ms. Piaz, would you like to take us...
On March 13th, the Board of Education approved the initiation of bid pack 14, which includes these upgrades. On Wednesday, June 13th, this package included seven different, the bids were open on June 13th, and seven different bid divisions. The bid results from bid package 14 were attached. This is the final read for the project, totaling $117,248.
Are there questions on this? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next is action item 180704. Consider approval of proposed upgrades to Salem High School Kitchen, proposed air conditioning upgrades. Proposed twice. It's a final reading.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of proposed upgrades of the Salem High School Kitchen, air conditioning upgrades. Final reading, action item 180704.
Support.
Motion was made by member Kehoe and supported by member Brooks. Are there questions on this?
Just as a note for any of the people that are watching at home or standing in, or in the audience here, we went through all of these action items in the Finance and Operation meeting, where we had a ton of fun, talking about all of these things and all of what was happening. And you're not getting questions tonight, because we asked all those questions at that time. Thank you.
And during the first read.
And during the first read.
Okay. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Just checking to make sure everybody is awake here. Okay, next up is action item 180705. Consider approval of resolution to upgrade the serving area in the Canton High School cafeteria. It's another final reading.
Madam President, I move that we consider the approval of a resolution to upgrade the serving area in the Canton High School cafeteria. Final reading, action item 180705.
Support.
Okay, motion was made by member Kehoe and supported by member Brooks. Are there questions on this? Discussion? Nope. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next up is action item 180706. Consider approval of resolution for the Plymouth High School JV Track Replacement Project. It's another final reading. Could I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of resolution for the Plymouth High School JV Track Replacement Project. Final reading, action item 180706.
Support.
Okay, motion made by member Kehoe and supported by member Brooks. Any questions on this one? Discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. And next is action item 180707. Consider approval of resolution to approve project to expand parking lot at Byrd Elementary School. It's another final reading. Could I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of the resolution to approve the project to expand the parking lot at Byrd Elementary School. Final reading, action item 180707.
Support.
Motion was made by member Kehoe and supported by member Brooks. Any questions? Anyone? Discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next is action item 180708. Consider approval of resolution to renew TDS Telecommunication Corp., Phone Service Contract. It's a final reading. Could I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of resolution to renew TDS Telecommunication Corporation Phone Service Contract. Final reading, action item 180708.
Support.
Okay, motion was made by member Kehoe and supported by member Brooks. All in favor, anybody got questions on this one?
I think our questions were answered in the board updates.
Yeah, and I did want to thank Mr. Salzer and Ms. Merritt for getting those questions answered by email. Thank you. Okay, any discussion on this?
No, but thank you for answering my questions.
Even though it's not about that topic, can I just, I just want to circle back to the fact.
We got a motion on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Because I don't like to leave, I don't like to have the wrong answer in people's heads, so I wanted to just return to Mr. Kehoe's. To Mr. Kehoe's question regarding the equipment, I, I'm working with so many lab upgrades, so the equipment is the exact same as the CTE one. I'm doing two other labs, so I just didn't want to leave you with the wrong impression.
Not a problem.
So, correct that.
I got, I got my nerd hat on, so I...
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is action item 180709. Consider approval of resolution for PCEP Verizon Easement. It's another final reading.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of resolution for PCEP Verizon Easement. Final reading, action item 180709.
Support.
Motion was made by member Kehoe and supported by member Brooks. Is there discussion on this? Or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Finally, we have action item 180710. Consider approval of resolution to replace first-generation iPad Minis, and it's another final reading.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of resolution to replace the first-generation iPad Minis. Final reading, action item 180710.
Support.
Motion was made by member Kehoe and supported by member Brooks. Are there any questions?
No questions but a comment, just appreciate the investment that we're making in our elementary schools, and I know that those, those students will appreciate the devices. I wish that Apple supported them longer, because I don't think the devices are really that worn out, but it is good to have new and supported devices that can get the latest upgrades and security patches, so.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I have a clarifying question.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that we are purchasing the sixth-generation iPad and not Mini. So, the...
Replacing.
Right. Okay, so I just want to make sure, again, a clarifying question in terms of, it says iPad Mini Purchase Final, so should that be sixth-generation or...
Yeah, it should be. It's iPad Mini Replacement or Purchase iPad Sixth Generation Purchase.
So, on page, on page 107 of the document, it gives the specifications on the iPads and what those machines are.
Right, I, I saw that. I just want to make sure that the public knows that we're not purchasing new Mini iPads.
Yes, we're purchasing replacement iPads for the original Mini. Yes, good, thank you for that clarity.
It's good to clarify that. Okay, any other questions, clarifications? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Now, we're at the time in our agenda when we do follow-up board questions. We did not have any left over from last time, I don't think. I know everything that I looked up, we had received, so. Does anybody recall, if I'm mistaken on that?